Planning and zoning commission meeting. We will start with a roll call. Marla, if you could take us through that?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Jared?
Here.
Commissioner Munson?
Here.
Commissioner Patrick? Commissioner Rich?
Here.
Commissioner Strifel?
Here.
Commissioners, there off. And Chairman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. We have a quorum. And we will move into the minutes from the special meeting, minutes from August 29th, and the September 11th meeting minutes. If there's any corrections needed or a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
All right, it's been moved to approve by Commissioner Munson, seconded by Commissioner Strifel. All in favor of approving the minutes from the August 29th special meeting and September 11th meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Meeting minutes are approved. We'll move into the consent agenda for tonight. And the consent agenda has the Weiss subdivision. So if we could have Marla or Mitch, if you could take us through a little detail on that.
Okay. This is the Weiss subdivision and zoning change. They are asking for approval to hold a public hearing on both the subdivision and the zoning change. It's described as being part of the southeast one quarter, section 34, township 139 north, range 79 west in Burleigh County. It's a one lot subdivision containing two acres. The zoning change would be agricultural to R1 single-family residential. The petitioners had approached Burleigh County regarding building a single-family home on the land they intend to purchase. After review of the request, the petitioners were advised to plat a one lot subdivision for the two acres they were purchasing and to request a zoning change from a agricultural. A preliminary plat and zoning change were submitted. The review committee did not find any issues of concern, and the property will use an existing approach to the property, and a storm water management waiver has been requested. The petitioners have not purchased the two acres at this time, but the property owner has agreed to allow the subdivision to be platted, and he signed off on the application and the plat. The zoning of the property is agricultural, but the zoning change to R1 single-family residential is a requirement for that size lot. And the property located north of the proposed subdivision is zoned agricultural. Directly west is R1. South and east of the proposed subdivision is zoned agricultural. A change of R1 zoning is suitable for this location. The staff findings on the preliminary plat. The subdivision fulfills the requirements of Article 33 of the zoning ordinances. The preliminary plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All concerns and corrections have been addressed. The zoning is agricultural, and the zoning change has been requested. The subdivision meets the requirements of Burleigh County Comprehensive Plan, Article 3, Residential Neighborhoods, Objectives 1 and 2. The petitioners have requested a name change from Weiss subdivision to Weiss Acres subdivision, and the change will be made on the final plat. The staff recommends that the petition for the preliminary plat meets all administrative requirements of the Burleigh County zoning, and the zoning change meets all the requirements of the Burleigh County zoning ordinances. So staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and the zoning change and calling for a public hearing. And you can approve it, approve it with conditions, deny the preliminary plat with reason, or table both for more information.
Thank you, Marla. Are there any questions for Marla? Seeing none, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any discussion on this, on the Weiss subdivision?
We move, we approve and go to a public hearing. Second.
All right, it has been moved to approve, to go to a hearing by Commissioner Reich, but Rich, and seconded by Commissioner Conley. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Would that motion need to also include the zoning change?
Yeah.
As long as you recommend that in your motion.
Okay.
But yeah, we can approve both at the same time.
Perfect. And?
I'm good with that.
Commissioner and Secondor are okay with, yes, including the zoning change, so the Weiss subdivision and zoning change. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote to move this to a public hearing.
Okay, the motion is to approve the preliminary plat and zoning change for the Weiss Acres subdivision for a public hearing. A yes vote means you approve of the motion. Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes.
It's approved.
All right. So the Weiss subdivision and zoning change will move to a public hearing. That is all we have on the consent agenda. We will move into our public hearings for this evening. We have, the first hearing on the docket is the Makadonski subdivision. So if we could get some detail on that, and then we will open the public hearing.
Okay, this is the Makadonski, I hope I pronounced that right, subdivision. Mark Isaac is the developer. And the location is part of the west half of the northwest quarter, section 9, township 139 north, range 76 west. The project size is 73.18 acres, and they're making four lots. The zoning is through Sterling Township, so we don't have to be concerned with zoning. The notifications were sent to the Bismarck Tribune and posted September 26th and October 3rd. Surrounding property owners were sent a notification September 26th, and it was posted on the Burleigh County website on September 26th also. Burleigh County was approached regarding a four lot subdivision and zoning change. Well, we didn't have to do the zoning change. And the reason for the dividing of this property is for different family members would like to build on the property. So they are breaking the property into individual lots. The review committee did not find any issues of concern. A storm water waiver has been approved. A paving waiver was granted. The Burleigh County Zoning Commission approved a preliminary plat and a public hearing on September 11th. Like I said before, the zoning is under Sterling Township, and Sterling has approved the continued agricultural zoning on this subdivision. And Sterling Township recommends approval of the plat. In the staff findings, this subdivision fulfills the requirements of Article 33 of the Burleigh County zoning ordinances. Paving waiver has been granted. Stormwater management plan waiver has been granted. The final plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All concerns and corrections have been addressed. Sterling Township has recommended approval of the plat. Sterling Township has zoning jurisdiction, and they approved the zoning as is. This subdivision meets the requirements of the Burleigh County Comprehensive Plan, Article 3, Residential Neighborhoods, Objective 1 and 2. Staff recommends approval of the final plat and to give a do-pass recommendation to the Burleigh County Commission. And you have the choice of approving the final plat and a do-pass recommendation, adding conditions, and once they're met, give it a do-pass, deny the final plat with reason, or table it for more information.
Okay, thank you, Marla. Are there any questions for Marla before we open this public hearing? All right, seeing none, thank you, Marla. We will open the public hearing on the Makadonski subdivision. So if anyone would like to speak on this matter, please approach the lectern, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and sign in.
I've got a couple of questions. I'm Cindy Wilson from Sterling. We live right across from the Makadonskis. We're just wondering, so they split it into four lots and family members or whatever their plan is to do with it. So can those lots be sold then to other people and be split into one acre lots and the big subdivision be there?
Okay.
I guess, Marla, if you want to field that one?
I can field that one. Yes, in the future, they could divide those lots if they wanted to, but they would have to go through the same process that we're going through now, where Sterling Township would have to sign off on it, because anything under, I'm not sure what the requirements are, but the county is, anything under 10 has to be changed to an R1 zoning. So there is always that possibility, but we will notify you.
And then, so the first notification the neighbors get is that when it's coming before you to be approved?
Uh, yeah, I believe, yes.
I mean, we got it September 26th, came in the mail.
Yeah, coming here, and then ultimately, it has to go to the county commission also.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. And then, too, you know, we have concern, because as any neighbor, if a whole bunch of houses go out there and Sterling doesn't have zoning right now, and there's dogs at large and with the livestock and stuff, it's a concern. So, I don't know. I just wondered what was coming across the highway.
Yeah, any questions for Cindy? And, yes, Commissioner Rich?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, are you opposed then? Would you like us to disapprove it, or what's your situation there?
Well, I don't want to, I live in the country for a reason, because we like the peace and quiet and the lack of neighbors. So, yes, I would be very much opposed to a subdivision across from us. Four lots, I mean, people are going to do what they're going to do. We're scared that in the future, people are going to buy those four lots, and because there is no zoning, what could end up there? It's a concern for us. It's a concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Strifel, we'll go to you first.
I have a question for Marla. What are the size of the lots? It's really hard to see on this.
There ones 10 acres, ones 34 acres, ones 24 acres, and one is three. Well, three's where the owners live.
Okay.
Where their house is.
And so, does that one stay?
Um, yeah, that one is there.
How does that stay?
They have zoning. Sterling Township has zoning.
Oh, okay.
And they were notified that this was coming up, and they approved the, leaving the zoning at a agricultural. Sterling Township got notified, as soon as we pretty much got this on our desk, I notified them. So they've known about it. You won't have a big subdivision coming in your neighborhood without knowing about it first.
So, is the township responsible for notifying us then? Do they have any? No.
No.
So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Bitner. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can address a little bit of that, and I understand your concerns. Any future development would come through the same exact process. And in Burleigh County, you're limited to the size of lots that you can have in a subdivision. I think it'll help your concerns a little, because to get below the kind of acreage they're talking, you'd have to do something like a central sewer system. We don't have a provision for allowing like a three-quarter acre lot or something that would really fall into what's considered subdivision. And with respect to whether the Sterling Township would be notifying, the answer, no, Burleigh County would be the one notifying you, and that would be a completely open process, just like it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with four lots, do they have to have separate sewers, or is there no zoning for that, or, just curious?
Oh, there are definite, I'll take that one as well. There are definite rules and regulations about sewer systems and their permitting. In this case, I'm certain that if they meet the engineering requirements, they would be able to have individual sewer systems or individual septic systems, like you probably have at your property. And that's kind of a standard across the county. Does that answer your question?
It did, thank you. So, the overall is that if they're going to sell a 10 acre lot into one acre lots, there's going to be a process. We're going to be notified. Or if somebody's going to buy the 24 acre lot and put a truck stop, or we would get a notification of that process?
Right, anything that would be, anything that we would be rezoning, absolutely, has to come through this process.
Yes. Yes. And keep in mind, that's a distance requirement within county zoning ordinances, so you're obviously within that distance notification area. If you've got notification on this one, you would be notified of any future action as well. Thank you.
How far is the distance that you notify or something like that?
On this one, we did a quarter mile, because it's a basic four lot subdivision. If it were like a gas station or something, we would do two miles for that.
So then, my other concerns would be, our township doesn't take care of, you know, places that are a mess or things that are a problem area in our township. So what's going to happen when there's a bunch of more residences out there and they're still not doing it? They don't care about the dogs running loose or yards with rats, because there's so much trash, or things like that. That's a concern, too. As it being right across the road from us, you know?
Well.
Yeah, I think Sterling Township would ultimately have the jurisdiction on that, yes, too, if they needed to enforce.
Yep, so we'd.
That's correct.
A person would have to go to them and?
Correct. Yes. Uh, yes, Commissioner Strifel?
So, I think it said in the application that this is for family members. Is there a problem there now that?
No, not with them at all.
Yeah, okay.
No.
All right, good.
You just never know, you know? And we're, had some questions. I appreciate you guys answering them. It would be nice if the people a quarter mile away would get a notice a little sooner, maybe than, we were shocked. We haven't heard anything. We don't socialize in the community or get out much. We had no idea. And it's a little shocking to open your mail, and when you live out there for the peace and the quiet and the lack of people, and then you read oh, a four lot subdivision coming soon, you know? So a little earlier notice would be appreciated by people.
Any additional questions for Cindy? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak on the matter of the Makadonski subdivision, this is a public hearing, so please approach the lectern if you'd like to speak, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and do we have a sign in on the, is there a sign in? Right, up there? Okay, yes. Sounds good.
Hi. Mark Isaac's with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. I'll sign in after I'm done. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things, just don't think there's any issues, but, so the three acre lot that's shown on the plat, that's an existing parcel today. We're not creating that. We're just plating it as part of the parcel, so there's an existing house on it now. The other lot where the older house is, so there's another house on, I think that's Lot 3. So two of the lots already have existing homes on it. The 10 acre would be a new parcel, and then the bigger parcel to the north would be a new parcel. So the rest of them have existing homes on them. I'd answer any other questions if you had them.
Yeah, any questions for Mark?
Only two have existing homes.
Correct. That's what I said, yep.
We have the existing home at 6799 and at 6601.
Yep.
Those are the two residents? Okay. Any questions for Mark before he steps away?
I have a question, because on the map we got.
Oh, if you could, if you could approach the lectern, yep.
Yeah, the one we got in the mail. Because we were understanding the middle, where Funston's house, Artist's house is, is the entrance.
Yeah, so this.
One, two, three, four.
This is where the existing house is. This is all one lot.
Okay, we thought that was the access.
No, this is connected, so this is all one lot.
So where do they get in? Where's their access?
So this is, this is the same approach. So this is an easement. So this lot and this lot will use this same easement. So it's the approach that comes in, and then it runs north up to this lot. So that'll be the same driveway.
Yes, so this won't be, this won't be actually putting in an additional access. This is still using the existing access.
Artist's approach.
Yep.
Okay.
So that comes into here. This is, you know, a new piece that they may build on, and they'll use this same driveway.
And these guys will come up here to get in, or right here?
Well, this lot here could come off of here or come through here, either one.
Do they have to get approval to put an approach on the section line?
Yes.
Mark, just a question, just a question for you, I don't know, Mitch or Marla, you might know also. I would assume these have access easement to every one of these lots, correct?
Yes.
From that existing?
Yes, it's on the.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, and the bigger lot also has access to the north.
If you could speak into the mic, please.
And the bigger lot to the north have access off the section line.
Okay.
To the north, plus from the access easement.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mark, from the Commissioners? Seeing none, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak on the matter of the Makadonski subdivision, please approach the lectern, let us know who you are, where you're from, and sign in. Anyone else would like to speak on the Makadonski subdivision, please approach the lectern. And one more, one more call to, if anyone would like to speak in this public hearing before we close the public hearing, speak now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on the Makadonski subdivision and move into discussion and action on this hearing.
Who would move to approve the final plat and give a do not pass to the Burleigh County Commission? Do pass. Oh, I apologize. Do, do pass, do pass.
Thank you. You confused me there, Commissioner.
Sorry. I got everybody on that one.
That would have been a new one for me.
Right?
Yeah, definitely.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved for approval by Commissioner Munson, seconded by Commissioner Rich. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marla, if you could move us into a roll call vote on this, on this public hearing to approve, for approval for the Makadonski subdivision?
Okay, the motion is to approve the Makadonski subdivision and give a do-pass recommendation to the county commission. A yes vote means you approve of the motion. Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Okay, the Makadonski subdivision is approved, and we'll move to the Burleigh County Commission. We'll move on to our second public hearing of the evening, the Chirney-Moreset subdivision. So, Marla, you could take us through the details of that.
I'm just going to have her give her this to sign. Okay. This is the Chirney-Moreset subdivision. Mark Isaac is the land surveyor developer. The location is part of the northeast one quarter, section 5, township 140 north, range 81 west in Burleigh County. This is six acres, more or less, and they're dividing it into two lots. Notifications were posted September 26th and October 3rd in the Bismarck Tribune. Surrounding property owners were notified September 26th and the Burleigh County website on September 26th also. And the request is for a do-pass recommendation. Burleigh County was approached regarding this two lot subdivision, and it contained six acres, more or less. It's Chirney and, I think it's Jason-Chirney and Moreset. They each, right now, own one lot, one each of these lots. The review committee did not find any issues of concern. Paving waiver has been requested and granted. A storm water waiver, stormwater management plan waiver has been granted, and the Burleigh County Planning and Zoning Commission approved the preliminary plat and called for a public hearing. The zoning has already been changed to R1 rural, single-family residential. The property owners are basically plating this into a two lot subdivision so that they can build on their property. The subdivision fulfills all the requirements of Article 33 of the zoning ordinances. A paving waiver has been granted. Stormwater management plan waiver has been granted. The final plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All concerns and corrections have been addressed and made. The Burleigh County Planning and Zoning Commission approved the preliminary plat on September 11th. Zoning is again R1, single-family residential, and the subdivision meets the requirements of Burleigh County Comprehensive Plan, Article 3, Residential Neighborhoods, Objectives 1 and 2. The petition for a final plat meets all the administrative requirements of the Burleigh County zoning ordinances, and staff recommends approval of the final plat and a do-pass recommendation to the Burleigh County Commission. And then you can approve it, approve it with conditions, deny it, or table it for more information.
All right, any questions for Marla before she steps away? Hey, seeing none, thank you, Marla. And we will move into opening. And we will move into opening the Chirney-Morissette subdivision hearing. So this is a public hearing. Uh, public hearing is open. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please approach the lectern, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, and sign in. If anyone would like to speak on the Chirney-Morissette subdivision public hearing, uh, please approach the lectern. And uh, last call for anyone who would like to speak on the Chirney-Morissette subdivision public hearing, please do now. Alright, seeing none, uh, we will close the public hearing and move into action and discussion on the Chirney-Morissette subdivision. Yes, Commissioner Rish?
I move we approve the final plat and give a do pass recommendation to the Burley County Commission. Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Commissioner Rish, seconded by Commissioner Munson to uh, move for approval and send to the County Commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Marla, if you could take us through that.
Okay, the motion is to approve the Chirney-Morset subdivision and give a do pass recommendation to the Burley County Commission. A yes vote means you are in favor. Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Alright, it has been approved to send the Chirney-Morissette subdivision to the County Commission with a do pass recommendation. Uh, we do have one other piece of other business that we need to take a look at. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission 2025 calendar for meetings, uh, with the meeting dates, application due dates, um, and the County Commission meeting dates are on here. If, uh, if anyone, if everyone has had a chance to take a look at this, and if there's any changes that are necessary, if not, and if there's any changes that we need to make, uh, we can do that or we can vote for approving that, uh, that scheduled calendar.
Munson to approve.
Second.
Alright, it has been moved by Commissioner Bitner, seconded by Commissioner Munson, uh, to approve the calendar uh, for 2025 for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, uh, the calendar for 2025 is approved and will be posted on the, on the Burley County website. I believe that takes us through all other business, unless anyone else has anything else they would like to bring up.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, it has been moved to adjourn, uh, and by Commissioner Streifel, seconded by Commissioner Munson. Uh, is there any opposition to adjournment? Hearing none, we're adjourned.